Thank you so much for being here, the city of Lauderhill. As we go over our city commission meeting. It is now six oh one and we are here for a city commission meeting and notice an agenda. And it's Monday, August twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, and the time is now six oh one. City clerk, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Dunn. Commissioner Hodgson. Vice Mayor Martin.
Here.
Mayor Grant.
Present.
City Attorney Ottnott.
Present.
City Manager Hobbs. Roll call completed.
Wonderful, thank you kindly. We are now going to go to communications from the public. I will ask for the vice mayor to take over this portion of the meeting. And just remember, when you come up, you have three minutes and you also have to state your address. Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you. This meeting is open to the public. Once you come up, you have three minutes to speak. After everyone has spoken, then the city manager and commissioners will respond. If you didn't sign up, please see our city clerk to sign up. First up, we have Jackie Vernon Thompson. Please state your name and address for the record.
She was here.
You're moving, um.
She's outside? Okay.
We'll call up May Smith.
Um, Marcellus, could you get her for us, please? Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I stand before you today in reference to um, the senior application that you have out for rebate. Um, I remember some years ago, um, my husband was on a probate with the family members and some of the children were left off the probate because they were outside children. And therefore, that meant that if the others knew, they would be getting, we would receive less money from that probate. I said that to say this. I am concerned with the correct amount of money that was sent over to the city in reference to this PFAS lawsuit in reference to the water. Because our water comes from the county. And so if it comes from the county, then the money came over from the county to the city, I'm assuming. I don't know what that amount is. I would like to know. I would like to know also if everyone is drinking the water and it's part of the PFAS lawsuit. And I'm all for my seniors, I'm one of them, would get that hundred and fifty dollars. But if the cities, if the county sent over more money and we're entitled to more than this hundred and fifty, I would like to know that. So, and, and again, it says seniors only, but it should go to everyone in the unincorporated areas, previous unincorporated areas, because we don't get our water from the city. The city probably got another pot of money for the city residents that are receiving water. Again, the county is where we get our water from. That being said, there must have been or should have been an amount of money that came over to the city for the areas that were annexed in because most of us are still on the county water. And if you could, Mr. Hobbs, please tell me what that amount is on record and how did we come to just a hundred and fifty dollars um, with the amount of residents in the west, um, east side of the city. Thank you.
Wonderful. And, and city, city manager, when you do respond to that, I would also like the city attorney to also chime in as it relates to it. Okay, thank you.
All right, next up, Jackie Vernon Thompson.
Good afternoon or good evening. Please forgive me for my absence. I ran outside for something really quick. I had no idea it'd be the first one. Greetings, Mayor Denise D. Grant. Also, Vice Mayor and Commissioners, thank you so much for having me this afternoon. No complaints today. I just want to share that I am so grateful on behalf of Youth Empowerment Village for your continued support year after year since two thousand seventeen. You've had, you've given us the opportunity, rather, to use one of your buildings absolutely free and we owe it all to you. Our growth has been phenomenal in terms of the students and their transformative experiences. Also, our trip to Tallahassee, we were able to take our students and interact with state representatives and senators for four days. It has been a phenomenal journey and I am so very grateful to you all for voting to allow us to use this building, which is the museum. Now, I would be remiss if I did not express my gratitude to Scott Newton and his team for assisting me and scheduling everything. So Scott, I'd like to present this award to you and your department for being there for us.
It's very nice. I, perhaps Scott, can we take a picture? Yep, go ahead.
Right now?
Yes, but. Thank you.
This is, this plaque is for the city of Lauderhill to make sure that you all somehow display it to express our gratitude. Our gratitude on behalf of Youth Empowerment Village for your continued support. It does not go unnoticed and every year we look to you for your support and you're always there. Next year will be no differently. So we thank you so much.
Uh, thank you kindly. You have fifty-two seconds left. I guess you don't have the opportunity to discuss what you guys do. You think you can do it in thirty seconds?
Absolutely. During our five weeks, every summer, we gather approximately thirty-five students. And for five weeks, we hone on public speaking, effective communications, proper etiquette, entrepreneurship, financial awareness, and just overall decorum. And we literally see the students transform within those five weeks. The age group is from ten to seventeen. The parents are supportive, the city of Lauderhill is supportive. And we have quite a bit of supporters, including the Broward County Sheriff's Department, who really believe in what's happening with our youth and they support us as well. So thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you kindly. Before you leave, we'll like to take a picture with a plaque. Thank you. Wonderful, thank you so much. Is there anyone else?
There's no one else. Is there anyone else that was, wished to speak that didn't sign up? Close to the public.
Okay, close to the public. And so before we actually have the city manager to respond to those two individuals, I would like to acknowledge that we have Commissioner Tycee from the, the We Care City of Lauderdale Lakes that's here. And madam, if we can ask you to come to the front, please. And we also have our former state representative, the man. The man, the boss, yes. Um, State Representative Bobby DeBose, if you can also please come to the front. Okay. And so, um, if you can just do, give us a few words, please. And then you have, of course, the authority to sit up front if you choose.
Madam Mayor, you caught me off guard.
We can't miss you with a ride.
My first time in your chamber and it's beautiful.
Thank you.
I'm here on behalf of my friend, May Brown. She invited me because she said you are naming a street after her brother, Charlie's Patty, something like that.
Okay.
So they asked me to come and I'm happy to be here.
Wonderful.
And the chamber looks good. I see stuff that I can take back to my chamber. I will. So thanks for being here.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Yes, we appreciate you being here. It's, you can go back if you choose, yes.
Uh, good evening.
Hello.
Mayor, Commissioners, uh, man, this always, you know, brings me back where I started my political career. Local government, you guys are the closest to the people and you're really doing the work and doing a great job. I'm, actually was invited to, uh, come here and support a, uh, more than friend, uh, like family. Uh, Eddie Campbell and, um, her family. So I just came here to give her some love. And I'll say it's very important that we give people their flowers while they're here to smell them, so.
Thank you very much. We do appreciate you being here and thank you for your years of service. Yes, it has made an impact and a difference, not just in the city of Lauderhill, but the state of Florida. We do appreciate you very much, sir. And Commissioner Tycee, the same is extended to you for the city of Lauderdale Lakes. Yes, thank you kindly. All right, wonderful. City manager, if you can please respond to those two individuals.
Yes. Uh, Ms. May Smith, as it relates to the PFAS funds received by the city, we did not receive any additional dollars from Broward County in relation to, uh, the annexed community. Yes, you do receive your water from the county. However, as it relates to the funds that were received, uh, the settlement funds, they did come straight through, I believe, an attorney uh, that through the litigation. So we did not receive any additional dollars as it related to the annexed area residents. So to your point, as it relates to the hundred and fifty dollars, those dollars again are only made available throughout the city, including the annexed residents, uh, to residents that are, to seniors, fifty-five and older. For the city, for residents that receive dollars from the city, receive water from the city, they will receive a credit. For all other residents that are outside, uh, of our jurisdiction as it relates to water service, they will receive a hundred and fifty dollar direct check. But those dollars again are only made available to seniors. As it relates to the money received, we've received about seven hundred and, I'm sorry, about eight hundred thousand dollars. The balance of those dollars will go for water plant upgrades, uh, to our water plant. We are currently testing and are in compliance as it relates to PFAS. So, but we do have, uh, multimillion dollars worth of improvements that are slated for our facility. So the balance of those dollars will go to, uh, making those water plant upgrades, but felt it important to try to provide some assistance to our seniors. That's why only seniors were selected, uh, throughout the city.
Thank you kindly. I think you have covered it, but would you like to add something, city attorney?
Um, Madam Mayor, I'm fine. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. And number two.
Uh, as it relates to Ms. Jackie, again, we've worked with you for a number of years. Uh, and you two, uh, provide an excellent service to our residents, not only through the city, but also through our CRA. There are a number of programs. Uh, we ask that you continue to partner with us uh, as we move forward and hopefully we can expand on the services that are provided. It's definitely a benefit to our, to our residents, to our youth. Uh, and also there are some programs that you provide are not, that are not just for the youth that will uh, look to expand also to some of our adults. So again, thank you for working with our youth uh, and providing the, the, the mentorship that you provide through your services. And this is a benefit not just to you and the residents, but also to the city for those services. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And so at this time, we are closed out for communications from the public. We are going to begin our regularly scheduled meeting and I will ask the city clerk to please call the roll again.
Roll call. Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Hodgson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Martin.
Here.
Mayor Grant.
Yes, here.
City Attorney Ottnott.
Here.
City Manager Hobbs.
Okay, wonderful. And so we have completed our roll call. Everyone is here. And at this time, we are going to stand for the pledge of allegiance. Wonderful. And so we are going to go into housekeeping. I will turn this over to our vice mayor. But prior to doing that, would like to welcome my colleagues back from a, what it was, a three weeks? Not necessarily vacation because we were working, but we weren't having meetings. So welcome back to all of my colleagues. So welcome back to our vice mayor, Sorey Martin. Welcome back to Commissioner Campbell. Okay, welcome back, Commissioner Dunn. And welcome back, Commissioner John T. Hudson. Okay, the, yes, sir. Well, according to the city attorney, we cannot.
It's no gift policy.
Okay.
Coffee.
Coffee. The city attorney and the city manager were here the entire time, so not a welcome back, but very good to see both of you. Okay, wonderful. So housekeeping, Vice Mayor.
Yes, we want to, uh, amend the title for item number fourteen A, resolution number twenty-five R zero eight one five seven. And I'd like to ask a motion to accept this final revised agenda for the city commission meeting for August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five.
So move. Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second and we are now going to call for the votes.
Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodgson. Vice Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Grant.
Yes. And now that has been passed five zero. At this time, we will proceed with proclamations. We do not have any. And we will then go to presentations and this will be a fifteen minutes maximum. And so item A is a presentation from Camille Williams. She was the first place winner of the Lauderhill Rising Star Talent Show. Um, it was requested by myself, my office in fact, but we would like to congratulate Commissioner John T. for bringing this to the city of Lauderhill. And it was indeed an excellent production, got many raves and reviews. And so we will turn this over to him.
Is the young lady here to perform?
She should be here. Ms. Williams?
It certainly was an exceptional, uh, performance that the Lauderhill Performing Arts Center, when they had that function. And I would have loved to see her here this evening, but I'm not sure if I can speak about her anymore if she's not present, which I was expected to be here.
Traffic.
Uh, Commissioner, I believe I, I know the family and I think they were on a vacation. I don't know if they're back yet.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
All right, wonderful. So they were on the agenda, but nevertheless, congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you so much.
Okay, great. So item B, it's a presentation from the Lauderhill Steel Assembly. And we, this was requested by Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you. If they can come on up and get their instruments, we got fifteen minutes. Tell us a little bit about the organization, history, Lauderhill, all the things you've done in Lauderhill. I see all the time, so.
I would love to. Good evening, Mayor Grant, Vice Mayor Martin, Commissioners Campbell, Dunn and Hodgson, City Manager Hobbs and, uh, City Attorney Ottnott. I am Mary Rodriguez. I am Mary Rodriguez. I am a very proud member of Lauderdale Steel Ensemble since it began in 2003. The mayor at the time was Richard Kaplan, just to give a little perspective. I'm here today with several other members of the band. We have Desiree and Jelani, and they are just showing you two of our many awards that we've earned over the past years. And we also have Malachi and his father, Masai. They both play with us. All of us are players here. We actually would have had more members of the band here this evening, but we have a couple gigs this week, and so we have practice tonight. So we're playing hooky. We're going to go there right after this. We, we're currently in a position where we are practicing out of a storage unit over here on 23rd Avenue, the public storage unit, because we are once again looking for a place to have our practices. Through the years, Lauderdale has been helpful in finding places for us. And then other times, it's just, you know, at times are tough and rough, and we've looked on our own. But just to give you a perspective, we bear the name Lauderdale, and we have developed a mission to keep steel pan and culture alive by teaching and educating both adults and youth. We do this by giving lessons to anyone who wants to learn. We perform out in the community. We play at cultural festivals, Unity Fest, sporting events, schools and churches. We have played at the Miami Heat game. We played, two of our players have played the last couple of years the National Anthem. We played for the Cricket World Cup Trophy Visit. We've played for Super Bowl pre-game visits, and we were even recently asked to play the Inter Miami game. We participated in the Miami Broward One Carnival Panorama for a number of years. We've earned four championships there, two seconds and a third. But probably like something that's near and dear to my heart and something we really strive to do is to work on being a year-round band. That's a much smaller group, and these are some of the people that you see here that work on that. You know, we don't get paid, we're not professionals. It's just everyone is doing it for the love of pan, for playing pan, for keeping it alive, and for educating the youth. It's just very difficult if you don't have a steady place to practice. Most recently, we were able to share a space with a place in Sunrise called The Music School. But just to give you an example, so she let us keep our pans in the back, and we would come in the evening and pull the pans out and play. She was paying $3,600 for a very small space, and she only charged us, we were giving her 600 to help with the rent. And then her rent went up to $4,000, and she had to leave. So that meant we had to leave, and that's why we're back at the storage base. But just to give you an idea of what we've used before in the past, and a lot of times it's been through the city helping us. We were at the abandoned firehouse on 47th and 56th for a couple of years. We were at the back of Lauderdale Mall. We've played, we've used the museum on 47th. We've been at the JCC Community Center on Sunrise. We've used that, the Ken Thurston Building that's up here now, new before it became, before it was the new building. We were there for a while. We've also practiced at storage spaces, outdoor businesses, our own private homes, and then rooms in strip malls. But we are once again in need of a place to practice, and that's what we're looking for. We would like to ask for any kind of assistance or knowledge or any advice or ideas that the city council would have, either through the city or personal. A shared space is probably the most viable alternative at this point. Times are tough. There's a lot of businesses out there. We almost had a place with a tire company that they would allow us to come in in the evening and play. But we really want to continue what we do. I have to tell you, it's, it's really near and dear to my heart this, with the, working with the kids. You see Malachi over here is 10 years old. We need, you know, we need 10 more of Malachi. Well, and actually, full disclosure, Malachi turned 11 recently, but I wrote this before he turned 11. So Malachi, yes, he's 11 now, he's a preteen, but the 10, the 10 was stuck in my brain. You're going to have the opportunity to hear from us a little bit more this week, because I believe that we're involved with an award ceremony later in the week, and then we're also going to be playing Friday, Friday at the, the building in the back. And I, I would love for you to meet the whole entire band, because not only do we have Malachi, who's 10 years old, we also have Buddy, who's 80 years old, and he's been playing for 65 years. He's an incredible wealth of information and talent and skill and stories and all kinds of great things from Trinidad. So that's what we really want to keep going. And it's not just Trinidadians, it's not just Caribbean's, obviously, I'm up here too. It's for anybody and everybody that just loves the pan and loves the music. So we're going to let Malachi present to you a short tune here. If you're anything like me, sometimes you sit and hear facts and figures, and we need this and we need that, and then you walk away and you say, what did you say? So we did make a little cheat sheet that says, you know, if you can, if you happen to think of something or come across something, or you have the cheat sheet, great. It's there and with our information too. But in the meantime, I hope we see you again, maybe perhaps Friday, and come up. I'd love to introduce you to the whole entire band. But right now, we have, Malachi, are you doing Pump, Pump It Up? Or which one are you doing? Malachi, are you going to do Pump It Up? Pump Me Up? Is it okay? Yes? Okay, so I'm going to give it away. Ready, Malachi? Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to let Malachi take it away. Thank you again to Commissioner Martin. He has been a staunch supporter of ours for the last several years. So thank you very much for inviting us, and we hope we see you later in the week or at any one of our upcoming events. We're celebrating Trinidad's Independence Day this weekend, so we hope to see you out there. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Malachi, job well done. Good job.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor, and that concludes our presentations. As mentioned, we had two persons, elected officials that have been mentioned, but I've also realized that we also have a former elected official from the city of Tamarack. That is Commissioner Gillan, that is here. Welcome, sir. And I see that Dr. Bar is here as well from the Urban League. Welcome. Okay. So at this time, we are going to move on to our quasi-traditional for the city attorney then to take over that matter.
Yes. Item number one, Mayor, is a resolution of City Commissioner of Lauderdale, Granton, ECBMBG2 Lauderdale LLC, on behalf of Boca Gas Company Holdings II LLC, a special exception use development order to allow in the general commercial zone district to conveyanceable use of existing service station with a convenience store and car wash used located at 1901 North State Road 7, Lauderdale, Florida, provided for effective date. Thank you.
Thank you kindly. And so we have Molly from staff that is here. And city attorney, do you have to, do they have to be sworn in?
If there's an applicant, yes. Do you swear to tell the truth, not the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And so Molly, if you may proceed.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners, Vice Mayor, City Attorney and City Manager. This is the request for the conveyance of an existing service station with convenience store and car wash. It's at 1901 North State Road 7. It's currently a Shell gas station. It's just north of the Wendy's on the west side of 441. If everyone can orient in their head exactly which site that is, and you have an aerial photo in your backup. Property ownership has changed. The previous resolution was granted specifically to the previous owner. And since the landowner at this location has changed, a new special exception use approval is required to be issued to that new landowner. They are Boca Gas Holdings. I have them with me, their regional manager, his name is Sayed Hassan. If we have any questions for him, and I could certainly answer any questions the board might have as well.
Okay, wonderful. Sir, if you, you can come to the podium. Okay. I see that Commissioner Dunn has her light on. Yes, thank you.
Thank you for having me.
In reading the backup, I just want to kind of reaffirm certain things that, that's in the development agreement, just to have you verbally acknowledge them.
Okay.
So I know that there were a couple of violations on the property around operating without a valid COU, but that's been taken care of, right?
That is correct. This application is to request for a COU. Once this is approved, then I believe we will be allowed to acquire a COU to continue to operate that convenience store.
Okay. And then my other thought was, I see in the backup that there were some concerns about, about the possibility that this may increase crime in that area because of loitering and all of that. So staff has put certain conditions in the development order. One is that it's limiting your hours of operation so that you'll, may find the document. Molly, could you help me out? What's the time again that you're?
11:00 PM, Madam Commissioner.
Okay.
6:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
6:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and that also limiting the, the time the alcohol is being sold as well?
Correct, including on Sundays. And those hours of operation are consistent with the U-Save, which is the convenience store immediately to their west and their closest similar neighbor.
Okay, is that okay with you, sir? All right. If you can please speak into the mic, sir?
Sorry, so it's going to be 6:00 to 11:00 going forward?
6:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Okay, all right, great. And then the other thing that was in the agreement, I just want you to verbally just acknowledge, sir, that you're not going to be operating the car wash. Is that true?
For now, yes. We don't have any immediate plan to reopen the car wash. But I spoke with Ms. Molly, and we decided that if in future we do want.
There's a way for you to come back and get that done. All right, and then finally, the, the SEPTED, I don't know if I'm saying it right, but the environmental assessment that the law enforcement team can do to make suggestions about how to make that area safer. That's something you're open to, right?
Yes, we are.
All right, wonderful. Thank you. That concludes my question. Thank you so much, Commissioner Dunn, Commissioner Campbell. Yes, sir.
Molly?
Yes, sir.
Hi. What's your name, madam gentleman?
Sayed Hassan. He's the regional manager.
Well, you know, I can't pronounce.
Say that last name again, please, Molly.
Hassan. H-A-S-S-A-N.
Well, you, you just used his name because I can't pronounce.
Hassan. Hassan.
I, I was fortunate, I think it was on Saturday, to meet one of your partners. Molly, what's the issue with the car wash?
The car wash has been defunct and inoperable for many years. Every once in a while, the management there will send an applicant down, an individual operator who will ask to put up a pop-up tent inside of that structure and re-initiate the car wash. We believe that the car wash is well-sighted, but we want to see that if that car wash gets re-established, it gets re-established appropriately with the appropriate drainage, safe mechanisms, and through permitting. So we're requesting the ability to, for them to operate the car wash. But one of the conditions is that they would have to do a site plan modification before the DRC and get a new site plan approval. If and when they want to re-operate that, we can make sure that it's environmentally sound for the neighborhood.
So you're talking about a regular car wash or?
I'm talking about right now, they have just in the northwest corner of that property, existing a drive-through, a concrete tunnel.
So, so the, the question, and I, I don't know if you're aware of it, he was presenting the possibility of having a hand wash.
The.
What's the story there?
The code is specific about what it will and will not allow. It would allow for a portion of that to be a hand wash or a hand detailing station. But what we don't want to see, we want to prevent inhibiting traffic flow there and turning it into a situation where it looks like a hodgepodge mashup of different kinds of tents. So we want to make sure that whether we're fully approving an automated or one with a hand wash component, that it's going to be attractive and well-located. But it's possible.
But that's not a part of what we're dealing with today?
Not now, no. If you approve tonight, it's just for the overall use of a car wash? It doesn't provide any specifics?
But you're saying overused, overall?
Overall, whether it's a hand wash or an automated car wash. The request today would be to approve a car wash. Generally, it doesn't specify either hand wash or automated.
But you, but you're, you're confusing me.
How so? Let me provide additional clarity.
Okay, no, no. Let me a bit more specific, because on one hand, you're saying that it's not ready for that, but you're saying that we can approve it?
We, if, it's not, you couldn't turn on a switch right now. There's no mechanisms inside of that. It's just an empty concrete shell, like a short tunnel. What we wouldn't approve is a, a person coming up to the counter saying, we just want to open a hand car wash here and giving them a business license for such. This would give the site the ability to do a car wash, but there's an additional condition following that, which that they have to come into DRC.
I, I got it, I got it. Okay, all right. That, that's it.
Okay. So we are approving just in general, but in terms of the specifics, he would have to come back, go through the process, and then we will vote again, correct?
No. This, today would approve the convenience store and the service station for the new ownership of, under Boca Gas.
Got it.
And the possibility of a, of a car wash moving forward in the future. They would not have to come back for the car wash?
They didn't just have to go through.
Yeah, they just have to go through the site planning process with the, with the staff development.
Okay, got it. All right, wonderful, thank you. Any other questions or concerns? All right, may I have a motion? A second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. It is now open to the public? Okay, it is close to the public. City Clerk, please call for the votes.
Commissioner Campbell? Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hobson? Vice Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes, and this has been passed 5-0. Congratulations, thank you kindly.
Thank you, Madam.
We are now moving on to our consent agenda. The agenda has been given to us for about seven days. We've had the opportunity to go over it, talk to the various disciplines, and ask our questions and to voice our concerns. And so it is on the consent. We still have the opportunity as the commission to pull it accordingly and as well as the public. So I would ask the public as well, if you do have one, to review the consent agenda. If there is an item that you would like to pull, I am going to give you 60 seconds to do so, as well as with my colleagues. I'd like to pull three and 11. Commissioner Dunn is pulling item three and item 11 of the consent agenda. Okay?
Mayor.
And, yes, sir, I'm pulling as well.
Okay.
I'll do it to it, yeah. And so I will be pulling item 14B and item 14C. What say you, Commissioner Campbell?
Four minutes?
60 seconds. Okay, but 14B and 14C. You're pulling 14A, and that is our commission. Okay, that's already been pulled. So one moment, sir. Commissioner Dunn, as well as Commissioner John T. What say you, Vice Mayor? You're good. Okay, yes, sir. D?
It's pulled.
Fourteen C.
B, B.
B, B, okay, B. as in boy.
It's pulled.
That is full. Thank you so much, sir. And that is Mr. Wilkinson, Home Owners Association President, Broward Estates in St. George. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so we have pulled, I, go ahead? Okay. Okay, great. So we have pulled item three, we have pulled item eleven, we have also pulled item fourteen A., fourteen B., and fourteen C. Okay, and so, city attorney?
Yes, Mayor. Item three, Resolution Number twenty-five R. dash zero eight one forty-seven. Resolution, City Commissioner of City of Lauderdale calling for a special election to be held on March tenth, two thousand twenty-six, for the qualified electors of City of Lauderdale for a general bond referendum, prior to official ballot, providing for bond procedure, approving a municipal elections agreement between the Broward County Supervisor of Elections and the City of Lauderdale. The city manager and city attorney with authority to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, right to effect date. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you kindly. So the consent agenda, and so that is Resolution Number twenty-five R. dash zero eight dash one four seven. Commissioner Dunn?
Yes, Kenny, refresh my memory. When we had the conversation about this during the workshop, didn't we say that there is going to be some additional conversations or discovery around whether or not this is something that the residents truly want to do, the bond issue? Because I think there was only a limited number of surveys responses, right? Refresh my memory?
So, no, I I I thought that there was a consensus to move forward. I recall the conversation being around the date of the actual election, whether it was March versus November. I know that for over a year now that we've had conversations with the community, going back to June, maybe twenty twenty-four. As related to that, I can tell you that based on the surveys, it was positive. Everyone did not take a survey, but for the ones that we communicated with, it was positive. What the plan is going forward now is for us to go on an educational campaign. And then there's still one last opportunity in January of two thousand twenty-five, because the commission actually has to vote on the actual questions to move it forward. But from my recollection, it the conversation had to do with the March versus the November election. But we will start now an educational campaign, assuming that this passes tonight, for, you know, all meetings with the residents, and then ultimately, a discussion or a question will come back to the commission as to the actual questions that will will be reflected on the ballot.
So if we vote on this item tonight, it's just to put it on the, it's just to say the election, not necessarily say that we want the bond, correct?
Correct, absolutely.
Okay, so my concern is, I think maybe a year ago, my position around the about the bond would have been favorable, particularly since I know that there are things that we want to do that we can't necessarily afford to do, right? And particularly because it's the continuation of a debt, not the addition of a debt.
Correct.
However, considering what's happening in the economy now, and considering that, for example, the City of Lauderdale is ninth in the state of Florida for SNAP benefits, and there's a tremendous amount of increase now in foreclosures, I'm not comfortable in in continuing to add additional debt. I'd prefer to see that that we conclude the current bond and then wait and see what happens after the, everybody is predicting like a recession, right? And I don't want to create additional hardship for residents. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Dunn. I I believe as well, city manager, that as you mentioned, this conversation most recently we've had maybe about a month or so ago, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And the entire commission was in favor of moving this forward a month ago, with the exception of Vice Mayor, who had some concerns. And so Commissioner Dunn, now your position has been changed for a month ago. Okay, perfect. In addition to that, we are going to be discussing a little bit more as it relates to the GO bonds. So can you now talk to us a little bit of why it's important to move forward with this?
Yes, ma'am. So again, base based on our conversation with our residents, as well as our commission and stakeholders of the public, we find it important that we offer this opportunity for us to make improvements traditionally that would take much longer for us to make. Again, we do have a five slash ten-year capital improvement program. And in order for us to actually fund all of those activities, this is a mechanism which allows us to make those improvements in a more timely manner. Now, as it relates to when the the election actually take place, March versus November, again, we've had that conversation, it felt it important. And and based on even our communication with the public, there was some opposition as it related to doing it in March versus November, but that opposition had to do with the misconception that there was added costs for doing it in March versus November. Since then, our city clerk has communicated with the supervisor of election, and it's been determined that it the cost, there is no additional cost for doing it in March versus November. So that was the opposition that we heard more so when speaking with the public. But again, this is an excellent opportunity. You'll see that we've issued two general obligations bonds in the past twenty years, and in both of those bonds, we've made great improvements throughout the community. We've touched all of our current community centers. We've made upgrades to our public facilities, streets, roads, as well as some public safety improvements throughout the community, the camera systems that we enjoy now, the license plate reader systems. All of those type of activities were funded through the GO bond. So again, we feel that this is the most, this is the best way for us to move forward with making improvements that benefit all of our residents.
Okay, thank you kindly. And you spoke of community meetings and outreach.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you just explain to us how many meetings you've had? And in terms of the survey, how many persons were surveyed?
So I don't have the the survey numbers with me per se, but I can speak to the actual community meetings. So traditionally, we've done what we call a community meetings where they're held here at City Hall. But what we elected to do this year under the new administration is to go actually out to the public and hold those community meetings in the community at the various HOA association meetings, and then just general community meetings. So we've met with all HOAs throughout the throughout the city, as well as some of the smaller associations within the condo associations as well. So we've we've done over twelve community meetings throughout throughout the community in that sense, November through through July. So we've done twelve between November and July. Prior to that, there were an additional four community meetings that were done. So in total, we've done a minimum of sixteen community meetings where we've gone out and had these conversations. We've provided for input from our residents. So even though we have a five-year plan, which is normally generated from administration, but we've also gone out and received input from our residents. So the items that you will see come before you for consideration in March, two thousand twenty-six, are those of the community. Again, there will be additional educational, there will be an additional educational campaign, so we'll continue to have more community meetings between now and March. But as of now, we've had a minimum, at least sixteen community meetings over the last year.
And separate and apart from the surveys, how then do you grade support versus?
So so just based on the general general responses during those community meetings, everyone that was present did not take the survey. The surveys were done both paper surveys and online, but everyone present was not, did not complete. But we also asked for a show of hands and support while at those meetings as well. And we've also, in addition, asked the HOA presidents and boards to communicate to their residents and provide feedback. So we've, in addition, in addition to the actual surveys that were taken, based on physical representations from that we saw in person while there, and then information received from the HOAs outside of those meetings showed support for us to move forward.
And what would you say is the percentage of those that are in supports?
At least eighty percent, based on our on the numbers that we've seen when we've been out in the public. I think the greatest question had to do with the added costs, and one of the things that we've that that we've been able to do through modeling of this is to ensure that the city will still have the ability to maintain and lower our debt as we continue to move forward, as we've done in the last several years relating to the GO bond.
Okay, and talk to me a little bit about taxes, because I think that is the major concern of our residents. Will taxes increase?
We've lowered our military, and again, there's two parts as it relates to how the tax bill is calculated. The tax bill is calculated based on what the military is, as well as the value. One thing I can tell you, if you take a look at your current tax bill, the City of Lauderdale has lowered its military rate on both its operating debt, as well as its voted debt, meaning our debt millage. What I can also state that we do not control the military rates of the other taxing authorities. So if you were to take a look, you'll you'll see authorities such as Broward County, you'll see authorities such as the school board, where their military rates have actually increased over time. So again, the impact that that has on your total tax bill may show that there's an increase as it relates to your total tax. But from the city's perspective, our ability to manage that is through levering the actual military, and that has been reduced this year. And I can tell you that as part of our budget presentation that was held back in July, we we pledge to also lower that in the coming year as well. And but and again, that's both the both the operating and the debt millage. And as it relates to this GO bond, one of the things we've been able to do, as I just mentioned, is to model as we issue this debt to still be able to have that ability to continue to drop the debt millage as it relates to the additional sixty-five, and still have the ability to issue the additional sixty-five million dollars to complete the needed projects throughout the city.
Okay, and so if this is not passed tonight, what will be the impact?
There are a number of projects that the community has been waiting for for a number of years that we would not be able to move forward with anytime soon.
Can you describe perhaps three?
Three projects. The one that that stands out most in my head are some of the improvements that are slated for the St. George community. There's a there's a pool, and there are some field improvements that are being slated for that area. There's also a community center that we're looking to build or construct, and some park improvements in various areas, for example, on the east side off of Twenty-first Street. I think that's forty forty-fourth, forty-fifth terrace over in that area are some. And then from a public safety perspective, there are items that are included in the GO bond, which include additional license plate readers, and then some additional resources for our police department.
Okay, all right. The pool was num mentioned as number one, but I'm sure it's not the most significant.
It's not, but that's the one that's that's the one that stands out in my head. That's what I've heard about forever.
All right, thank you kindly. I would actually like to hear from the rest of my colleagues. I see that Commissioner Campbell has turned his light on.
I recall we having extensive discussion on this issue, and we had various opinions, and finally, we decide that the voters should make this decision. That's the reality of our system. It's the reality of democracy. So at this point in time, we can debate the pros and the cons. We do also have opportunity, as we move forward, to inform and educate folks on our individual perspective. But ultimately, it's the voters, and if they decide, yes, it's it should be with, yes. And I know I have one vote, not as a commissioner, but as a resident in the City of Lauderdale, and so do all of us. And when you participate in a democracy, things sometimes goes your way, and sometimes it doesn't. I'm not nervous. I do believe in the the desire and the decision of the public, of the majority. And therefore, I we we had decided, we had a long debate also, should it be in November, or should it be a special election in in March? So I'm not sure why we're getting nervous at this point in time. We had decided that it's not going to be November, and we have been back and forth on it. So where we are now, it's, we have exhausted that point, and it's just for us to confirm if it's going to be in March.
Okay.
That was my understanding, yes.
Okay, thank you kindly. Vice Mayor?
Yes, as is mentioned before, some of my concerns, and I've talked extensively about it, is how we spend that money. If we're going to go into debt, which I don't want to do, but if we are, we do it smartly. And because the projects are still not finalized, and the questions still have to be determined, I'm willing to support this tonight so that we can continue to move this ball forward and still work that out.
Commissioner John T., any thoughts?
Just wondering, I I think.
Your mic, sir?
Sir, yeah, I'm looking at them months, November, March, and I just think that March would be the best time for us to prepare ourselves for that special election.
Okay, wonderful, thank you so much. And as mentioned, this is in democracy. I concur and agree with what Commissioner Dunn has said as it relates to the concerns of our residents. That's why we are all here. We are all very much concerned about our residents. We are very much aware as well, in terms of the state of our country and what has happened. Many cuts. I'm sure that all of you, if you have not yet, will be impacted to some extent. And organizations that are here as well, representing, I'm sure that you have been impacted. And so very much concerned about our residents, and we are preparing ourselves to ensure that we will be able to serve you to the best of our abilities. In fact, monies that we have in our budget, we have somehow figured out ways to repurpose that so we can provide more social services, which is very important. We understand that there is food insecurity, there are many other things that are happening as well, and we want to make sure that our residents are properly served in that capacity. And if we do not do that, then we don't need to be sitting up here. So each and every one of us is concerned about that. I think the item that is up currently is not to address that matter. Nevertheless, is to allow the public, the residents of the City of Lauderdale, to determine whether or not they want to vote for the GO bond. So we are not voting for the GO bond, and we're not voting to increase taxes or anything like that. What we are saying tonight is, we are voting to for it to be on the ballot so that the residents, the homeowners, the persons in the City of Lauderdale, the voters, can say yes or no. And I think we would do the city a disservice if the city manager and his team have gone to fourteen or so what meetings, talk with residents, and that's why those questions were quite imperative for me to ask. Because if he has had discussions along with his team with those residents, and they at an eighty percent rate are in favor of it, I think that we will not be doing our jobs if we then say we are going to turn a blind eye and close our ear to what the residents want. We're simply here to be a voice for our community. So I too agree that we have to be mindful, smart, intelligent, as it relates to how we spend our dollars and what is the need of our community. And I think this item does not speak to that. What this item speaks to is, are we going to allow it to be on the ballot so that the residents can vote? And so for me, that is a yes, because I believe in democracy. They should vote. And at this particular time, we will then ask for a motion. May I have a second? Perfect, and we will open it up to the public.
Last week, I made a call to you, Mayor, and unfortunately, we didn't get a chance to talk about what I actually called about, because I got hit with the discussion of the ballot, the March, the bond being on the ballot in March instead of November. So I asked, why is this bond being rushed to be placed on the ballot in March instead of November? Many years ago, the city voted to have elections in November with other elections to save money. So I'm trying to understand how it is we have a whole election in a separate month with nothing else going on, and we don't have to pay one penny for that election. I would like to see something from the supervisor of elections stating the city would not have to pay today or tomorrow for that special election. Kenny, you said on the call, the March election would not cost the city any money. You promised you would get me that in writing for the taxpayers. And why I'm talking about taxes, I want to be clear, that my what I'm speaking of tonight does not come as an employee of the Broward County Property Appraiser, but of my knowledge of what what's happening here. As I've said several times before, there's too many uncertainties for us to take the risk to put this on a ballot. And I I know what it is about the November versus the March. March ballot, more than likely, a lot of the residents are going to miss it. And so the very few that vote for the pass, we, the taxpayer, are going to endure it. So again, Kenny, I'm still waiting to get it in writing that today or tomorrow is not going to cost us. And I'd like for you to tell the taxpayers a few things. How the March election will not cost us any money? Which bonds are you planning to pay off? And how much is those that bond is going to be of those bonds? The amount that you're paying off to do the some of the improvements to the city, can we take those funds and do the improvement? I would like a copy of the entire bond, and please confirm on record, the military rate will continue to decrease, no increases in taxes as stated in the call. Also, as far as that pool goal, I was one of the people, the president at the time, two almost twenty years ago, that we were promised that we were going to get that pool. Today, we still haven't gotten it. As I said at the homeowners meeting, Kenny, you came to our meeting, you said it was going to cost us eight or nine million dollars some time ago. When you came and presented the bond, you said that St. George has eight million dollars allocated, and it included the pool, when previously it was going to be eight or nine million dollars, and you had to go find the money just for the pool. So help us understand how all of a sudden this pool is not going to cost us eight or nine million dollars, and we're going to be able to get everything that you stated on that on that budget. Thank you.
Thank you so much. May, we do appreciate your comments. I know the city manager will respond to a few things. But I would also like for the city clerk, considering that the city manager received the information from you indicating that there was not going to be an additional cost for March. Yeah, it's a cost for the entire election, but there's not an additional cost for that one, correct?
There's a cost for any ballot questions, whether they're in March or November. There's no cost for candidates in November.
Right.
But the supervisor election charges for questions. So if we pay whatever we pay in March, we'd have to pay in November.
It's one money, you're saying?
One money for questions.
Right.
It's the questions that are costing the money regardless of March or November.
Okay. Is that per election?
Any any questions for an election that was sent out?
Correct. I do have it in writing, and I'll forward it to you. The clerk did provide that to me in writing that came from the supervisor.
Was that the point that you were making, City Manager?
To that question, I don't know if you want me to address the other comments or not.
As it relates to the cost?
As it relates to the cost of the election, correct. That was the point that I would make is that regardless if it's in March or November, the fact that there will be a geo bond, questions that the cost would be the same, whether we did it with an election in November or in March. So for example, if the cost of the election is a hundred thousand dollars in November, and we have the geo bond added, and the cost for the geo bond is fifty, then the November election would be a hundred and fifty thousand. If you do the election in March, then the March election is fifty thousand, but the November election is still a hundred. So in the course of that year, we spend the same money, whether it's spent fifty and a hundred or a hundred and fifty at one time, we still spend a hundred and fifty thousand to have the election. But the fifty thousand is paid regardless if it's in March or if it's with an election in November.
So it doesn't matter?
No.
Okay. Thank you kindly. Can you respond to some of the other comments? Thank you.
Yes. So as it relates to the to St. George and the pool, one of the things I I I know that I continue to state that the request from the St. George community as it related to the pool came up post geo bond. So we did a geo bond in two thousand and five, and then we did a geo bond in two thousand, I believe, sixteen and sixteen, right? And the request for the pool came up after the question was already drafted and asked as related to the twenty sixteen geo bond. What the city did was to go out based on the interest expressed by the community and acquire the church that sit behind St. George Park. And the reference to finding dollars was because the geo bond had already been voted on, that the projects for the geo bond had already been identified and funding for those projects have already been allocated. So so in the city, and it's, I guess you'll say goodwill at that point, found dollars to go out and acquire the church in order for us to build a pool at some point in the future. It was always stated, and I've been consistent in what I've stated, even though people may disagree, I've been consistent in what I stated is that the geo bond wasn't the pool was not part of the past geo bond, and that it would be funded either if we found additional dollars or it would be part of the proposed geo bond that we're looking at doing in twenty twenty three. I'm sorry, twenty twenty six. What I also just recently spoke to is that because we have already gone out, we've developed plans that we've already received bids, that this would be one of the first projects that we would be able to move forward on quickly. So because we've already gone through that process that many times we have to go through when there are geo bond projects, we've already completed that, and we had. And again, those were done with dollars that were done found outside of the geo bond from twenty twenty six. So when I referenced finding dollars, that was because the the request for the pool came after the projects for St. George had been identified for twenty sixteen geo bond. So as it relates to us moving forward, the eight million dollars is not just for the pool, the eight point some odd million is not just for the pool, but there are a number of additional improvements that are slated for St. George. For example, there would be a field renovation, there will be lights added to the field, there will be a grandstand added to the field, there would be additional parking that's added to the park. So the eight point some odd number of million dollars that's being referred to is for all of those improvements. So we consider that to be a phase three improvement to St. George Park, not just for the pool.
Okay. And so just to be clear, this is the geo bond that is being proposed is not just for St. George, of course, there.
Correct. The geo bond that's being proposed is a sixty five million dollar geo bond, and there would be funds allocated to all areas within the city. It's just that the items that have been requested by St. George include the improvements to St. George Park, which one of those improvements is the building or the construction of an actual pool.
Okay. Wonderful. And so as we are prepared to vote, we are voting on whether or not this is going to be placed on the ballot for March the tenth in order for the residents to vote and make a determination if they want to move forward with the geo bond or if they do not.
Correct. And the requirement, again, to your point, is that there there's a two third vote that is required in order for us to move forward. So it's not even a simple majority. I can tell you that the past two geo bonds passed overwhelmingly. So there is a requirement of a two thirds approval, not just a simple majority, in order for us to move forward.
So essentially, we're given the opportunity to make that decision?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. All right. So we have a motion, we have a second, we've opened up to the public, and now we are close to the public. I will ask for the city clerk to please call the votes.
Commissioner Campbell? Commissioner Dunn?
No, families are struggling. Now is not the time to have additional debt.
Commissioner Hodgson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes. And this has been passed for one. Thank you kindly. We are now on to item number eleven.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item eleven, resident number twenty five R. Die zero eight one fifty six. A resident of the city of Lauderdale approving the renewal of Cigna Group Health Insurance Plan for the remainder of four years, original five year term, which began on October first two thousand twenty four and on September thirtieth two thousand twenty nine to include Open Access Plus and an exclusive provider organization and OAP Plus coverage plans over a payment for nine million six hundred and fifty six thousand four hundred and sixty four dollars from the appropriate budget code numbers and provided for effective date. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, City Attorney. Before we ask Commissioner Dunn to speak on this matter, I would like to hear actually from our H R director and just to give us a synopsis of this, what this is about.
So this is our annual renewal. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Attorney, City Manager. So this is our annual renewal for our health insurance for all city employees, and that's essentially what it is. We put it on the agenda every year. And just as a point of context, in terms of historically speaking, we had Humana for over thirty years. And so now we have just transitioned over to Cigna. It's our first completed year with Cigna. So of course, I think there are some hiccups here and there, as there would be with any carrier that we would bring on brand new. But overall, I think for it having been a change of over thirty years, I think our employees have done fairly well with the change. We've been obviously handholding any issues or concerns that have come up. The concerns have typically been related to pharmaceuticals in terms of like prescriptions and stuff like that. And unfortunately, throughout this transition, we found out that it's actually not legal for Humana. So the reason why we're not with Humana is because they moved out of the group insurance business, right? So they're no longer servicing group insurance. They still do Medicare and Medicaid and those things because that's what their heart's been in in terms of a company, but they do not do group insurance. So we, of course, were obligated to go out and, you know, go to bid for a new provider. So we ended up with Cigna. And in terms of the formularies, it was not legal for Humana to tell us, hey, these are the prescriptions that we cover. So in terms of everything else, we were able to get an apples to apples comparison and be able to have Cigna provide us with as much as an equitable service as they could. But the formularies in terms of prescriptions was it's been a little bit of a we're working through it, and so we're we're trying. And so in the upcoming years, what we're going to do is make some changes in terms of what we can to try and accommodate some of those employees that have seen a drastic change in terms of their prescriptions. But otherwise, that's generally it. And Gellen, if you wanted to add anything?
Okay.
Mike Gellen is our agent of record for our health insurance.
Okay. Welcome.
Good evening, Mike Gellen with Gellen Benefits Group. Good evening, Mayor Grant, Vice Mayor Martin, Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner Dunn, Commissioner Hodgson, Attorney Ottenot, and City Attorney, I'm sorry, City Manager Kenny Hobbs. So as 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 she said, there was a competitive process last year, and Cigna was selected as the insurance carrier for the current plan year. It's a five year agreement. And what's unique about this plan is we have a two year agreement, which had a rate cap of ten percent. So regardless of what the renewal called for, Cigna would only cap the increase at ten percent. Well, based on the claims information, the increase should have been twenty five percent because of the high utilization of the group. For example, the city so far has paid approximately six point seven million dollars in claim and premium. That's how much you paid to the insurance carrier. And Cigna paid out six point four million dollars in claims. So that's a loss ratio of ninety six percent. The target loss ratio for an insurance company is eighty five percent, where they make some sort of profit. So this has not been a profitable group for Cigna, which is why I called for a twenty five percent increase. But because of the negotiated rate cap last year, they they kept their honor and kept the cap at at ten percent. So wait, so the city has avoided paying an additional three point four million dollars in costs.
Okay. So what was the sourcing process or the selection process? Because there are many insurance groups that are out there. Why Cigna?
We ended up with, we did an RFP, and it was, like I said, the most apples to apples comparison. So they were able to provide us with as much coverage as we had with Humana, right? So being that we were a client with Humana for over thirty years, they kind of bent over backwards for us in terms of the services that we had. And even if you compare our benefits to those of other agencies, you will see that our benefits are a whole lot richer. And that's based on the relationship that we had fostered with Humana for all those years, right? So based on that and the richness of our benefits, we were able to do an apples to apples comparison with all the providers that, you know, responded to our RFP, and Cigna was who was selected by the committee.
Okay. And you mentioned that this is a five year contract?
Correct. However, it can be, obviously, we can go out to bid if if it's the recommendation or if that's the recommendation that you all give us.
Or if there's a breach in their contract.
Right. So I think that there are some workarounds, and obviously, it doesn't do us any good in terms of what it looks like for the city when we go out to bid after we have a five year contract. It kind of looks like who would want to go out to bid after one year if we have a five year contract with them? I think they'd allow us to, but it wouldn't look good for the city.
Okay.
I think there are going to be hiccups any with any provider. You know, you could have put in any sort of any any provider here, and I think I'd be standing here kind of explaining the exact same thing a year later, after thirty years of continuous service with one specific provider. So, you know, I think there.
What is the percentage of employees that have complaints about this complain about this insurance?
So I will say that actually, the Gellen Group has actually taken on a lot of those complaints if we've had them. The ones that I've had, I've handled myself or my staff has handled have been minimal. I would say probably in terms of a percentage, I would say less than ten percent in terms of her complaints that I've received. If there are issues with doctors, right? So some of the hiccups that we had at the very beginning are, we had like three specific employees that have been seeing the same doctors for over fifteen, twenty years. And unfortunately, those doctors do not take Cigna. So that was one of the major concerns that we had. We engaged them, actually, the Gellen Group engaged them and tried to have those providers, you know, accept a contract with us so that they could take Cigna, and they've unfortunately declined, which they're in their right to do. But, you know, those have been the issues outside of the formularies in terms of the prescriptions. It's been, you know, people who have had some issues with their primary care providers.
Yeah. And that's unfortunate, right? All right. So prescriptions, of course, main complaints you described, but also dental as well, right?
So I've had, we've had a couple of, I don't know if you could speak to any other major dental. It's been minor, and typically with the dental, it's 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 just a matter of all providers have like a cheat sheet, for lack of a better term, in terms of how they code certain visits. So there might be an issue with the coding or things like that. But in terms of the services or in terms of what is expected, I I don't know that we've had too too many issues.
All right. So before I turn this over to Commissioner Dunn, just wanted to ask a couple more questions as it relates to HMO and PPO. So that's the difference. I do believe that more education needs to happen, or perhaps I I see through our email that you would say, hey, we're discussing the insurance, and then maybe the employees don't really participate or get involved or are interested at that particular time to learn more. And so when these issues come about, of course, it becomes a challenge, right, for you guys? But I do believe that we do need to educate the employees effectively for them to understand what expectations are. I found it to be a challenge as well, and I did reach out to our our representative as it relates to the dentist going there and then having some work done, and you're paying over a thousand dollars out of your pocket. That was a challenge for me because I didn't have that with Humana. So I learned a little bit more about the difference, which I already knew, but it didn't really come to light until I had that situation, the difference between the HMO and the PPO. So I think, again, education is important. But I just wanted to ensure that this will, if we continue with this particular insurance group, that the rates will not continue to go up or the percentage every year because that would be a unless you're going to increase my pay. What about that? Commissioner Campbell, what say you? Okay. Well, I just want to ensure that that's not going to happen.
So we will do our best to try to manage the claims experience of the city by having these proactive events. We had a health health fair recently, and I think that's very helpful and obviously letting our employees know that, hey, the more preventative visits that you go to, the better it's going to be for us and our claims experience. But unfortunately, we do have some, you know, of the bigger claims we have. And unfortunately, it's inevitable when it comes to the health, and it could be not necessarily our employees, it could be the dependents, spouses, or children. So there is no real guarantee that next year we're not going to see an increase. In fact, the trend is typically to see an increase, but we are working with the Gellen Group to come up with some initiatives that will kind of counteract those increases that are projected to come. Because I I'm not going to say that there aren't going to be increases, but if we can provide our employees with different options that maybe will help with mitigating those costs, that's what we're going to do.
Okay. So City Manager, are we then prepared? Because if there are increases and our employees are at a set salary and times are already hard, as you know, what is administration doing to be able to deal with that matter?
I think as C C mentioned, we are, we've met just recently with H R as well as the Gellen Group to talk about measures that we can take to offset some of the the claims. And I think that's the biggest decider as it relates to increases. Now, there are contractual obligations that we have with our collective bargain agreements which spell out what portion of those increases, if any, will be borne by our employees. uh what portion of those increases, if any, will be borne by our employees. So I think from our perspective, it's, it's important that we do what we can do from a proactive standpoint to bring down our claims. Uh, and again, that's, that's where we see our, the biggest decider is based on the claims that we have. So we are doing some health fairs, we are promoting pro, pro, I guess you'd say preventative visits to the doctor. We're trying to identify some incentives uh that, that the employee could, could receive that'll bring down our costs, but will incentivize them to actually go to these uh preventative, I guess you'd call it preventative uh visits uh to the doctor. Because again, that's what we find out. It's not necessarily that uh once they go to the doctor or there's an emergency that their issue cannot be attended to, but it's that because they've taken so long that they did not go, that it results in a larger claim than it could have. Uh, so again, we are working to educate our employees on how important it is uh to take, uh have those annual visits while trying to work with the uh insurance company to uh come up with some incentives to uh promote uh good health with, with our residents. But as it relates to the actual cost borne by our employees, that's prescribed based for the majority of our employees based on the collective bargaining agreements.
Okay, anything else? Suggestions, recommendations?
As, as the city manager said, we just have to focus on preventive care. So for example, um, there's probably, there's about fifty-three employees um that ha- or not employees, but a combination of employees and dependents that have large claims. Large claims are defined as claims and ex- that one individual incurs in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars. So fifty-three individuals, employees, spouses and children, account for three point four million of the six point four million in claims that Cigna paid out. So generally, in group insurance, um eighty percent of the claims will come from twenty percent in the population. So, so we're, we're getting to that point and the best way to reduce that number is to make sure a hundred percent of the population gets their annual physical and blood work, know your numbers, know your status, and take care of whatever conditions you have. What's happening is people only go to the doctor when they feel sick. They find out late that they have something and now the company is paying a large amount for something that could have been resolved and identified much sooner and the costs would have been a lot cheaper.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure there's some specifics in terms of prescription as well, but Commissioner Dunn.
Thank you. About a month ago, I woke up and checked my blood sugar and the machine was broken. It wouldn't give me anything. So I go to the urgent care and um the urgent care says to go to the ER. When I get to the ER, my blood sugar is five hundred and thirty-one.
Wow.
I was hospitalized for days. Cigna denied covering one of the days that I was in the hospital. In addition to that, my doctor had called in medication, submitted paperwork showing that my A1C went from a five, where I didn't need medication, to now an eleven. And those of you who are in healthcare know what I'm talking about. Cigna denied covering my medication. Thank God, when I was in the ER, the doctor was able to give me some insulin. Do you want to know when I got my medication? I just picked it up today. Do you want to know how I was able to get that medication? Because my doctor called Cigna and advocated several times and Cece called Cigna and advocated for me several, several times. So I'm curious, if this is happening to me, how many other employees is this happening to? Um, I understand Cece did explain to me that the formularity from Humana couldn't be transferred over. But then, you know, you talk about the fifty-five family members who have chronic condition perhaps, right? We still need to make sure we take care of our people. And we're depending on an insurance company that's going to cover. How could you deny a hospital stay? I get it, Cece helped figure it out, that it was a coding error or whatever. But imagine if I didn't have a Cece to call and if my doctor wasn't advocating not once, not twice, but three times on my behalf, right? Plus, my doctor put me on a continuous glucose monitor, right? Which if you ever hear a beep, it means that my blood sugar went high and I sometimes leave the dais to go take insulin. They denied that. I had to pay out of pocket two hundred and forty dollars to get my continuous glucose monitor that could save my life. So this is a problem. And with the old insurance, I didn't have that issue, right? And so I'm hearing you say that there are other employees that's having similar issues. So my question is, what's Cigna going to do to prevent this from happening?
Yeah. That is a very serious matter.
Yeah, so that's a good question and um the, the problem that you have had and have experienced is, is the problem that many have experienced nationwide, not just with Cigna, but with other insurance companies. So insurance is- and Humana's out of business uh in group insurance because they, they could not compete with Aetna and, and, and Cigna and United Healthcare. Um, unfortunately, insurance is a for-profit business and the frustration that a lot of Americans have had resulted in the CEO of United Healthcare being killed, shot in the back. And so the frustration is, is nationwide and ongoing. Um, we probably had, there's five hundred and thirty employees on the plan. We probably had maybe thirty complaints. You know, not a high number, um, not unusual when you go from one carrier that you've been with for thirty years. Everyone knows everybody, then you switch to a new carrier. Um, and each of those thirty issues have either been resolved or there's been an answer. And some of those thirty were a couple of Humana claims that were not paid or processed correctly. So we're still going back to Humana and getting some issues resolved. All insurance companies have different prescription drug lists and they each decide what drugs are going to be on one, on, on their list versus another. There's another employee here that paid five dollars for a drug under Humana and it's two thousand dollars. Two thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
So to, to resolve, now, now, as Cece said, Lauderhill compared to other cities in Broward County has one of the richest plans in the county. Extremely low copayments for office visits, uh extremely rich benefits, no deductibles. So you pay very little out of pocket compared to employees of other cities. Uh, but, but Cigna uh enjoys the relationship with um Lauderhill. They want to make it a long-term relationship. And so airing out these issues is good for us to report back to Cigna and let them know that if they don't address these issues, then this may not be a long-term relationship.
So those thirty employees that covered and the, the employ- that, that complained about issues, and I've heard about employees who um needed diagnostic mammogram and their diagnostic mammogram was denied. I've heard about employees who their um, you know, medication costs one amount and then it went up astronomically, right? So given that, and you guys have been helping to navigate, so Cigna at this point know about the issues. So my question is, what's the strategy? What's the plan?
So, so each of those issues have been addressed. So anytime there's a, 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 an issue, um, an email is sent via secure email to, to make sure we're not in violation of any HIPAA rules. And Cigna usually addresses all the issues. There were a couple of mammogram issues where there should have been uh no payment, but the employee was asked to pay and that's been resolved. So some of the issue is Cigna educating the doctors on the richness of the Lauderhill plan and saying, typically under some other company, an employee may have to pay this copay, but not under um, not under Lauderhill. In terms of the prescription drugs, that has been an issue. Every single insurance company has their own list and every year, once, once or twice a year, we get an email where they say uh this drug is no longer on our list, it's going to impact this number of employees. Um, and so that's just, that's just a battle that just happens ongoing. You'll notice every time you watch TV, there are commercials and it's direct-to-consumer advertising, telling the public to ask their doctor for this drug or that drug. Uh, and a lot of these drugs are very high-cost drugs. They're brand-name drugs where there's no generic alternative. Uh, and, and, and that's what's really having a high-cost impact uh on the plan. But in terms of a long-term strategy, we are evaluating-
I pull the item-
Go ahead.
I just want to clarify. I want to make sure that I'm hearing you correctly.
Go ahead.
So in terms of strategies, we are evaluating other plan options. We actually evaluated other plan options this year, but if we made any move to any, any additional plan, we would have lost that ten percent rate cap and been subject to a three million dollar increase.
Okay.
So what I'm hearing you say-
Commissioner Dunn, we are going-
I just want to be clear that I understand.
Please, please.
I mean, literally, I only had, I, I haven't even spoken that much.
Commissioner Dunn, please listen. I will give you the floor. Please wrap this up. And then we will move on to Commissioner Campbell. We're giving you the opportunity to speak. We're not saying that you cannot speak. I was just simply saying utilize two minutes to wrap it up and then we can go to Commissioner Campbell. Thank you kindly.
I just want to be clear that I'm hearing you correctly, okay? What I'm hearing you say is that basically this is the industry, right? And that issues that's come up, you've dealt with them individually. But there's no systematic solution to make sure that the next time somebody gets hospitalized or the next time somebody needs a diagnostic mammogram, that they won't be denied.
Okay.
One of the things, Commissioner Dunn, that I can say is um, we pride ourselves in making sure that we give the utmost customer service, right? So just like you know or anybody on the dais knows, but they can give me a call at any time when they're dealing with something regarding insurance. We're going to deal with it on a one-on-one level and I think that our employees are very um aware that they can do that. So anytime we've had an issue with an employee, I'm the first person they're calling or they're calling my assistant director and saying, hey, I'm dealing with this. And when I tell you we are pitfalls when it comes to making sure we advocate for our employees, I, I kid you not. So I think we're going to just try to continue to deliver that same amount of, you know, individual customer service anytime we have an issue. And one of the things that we will do is the next time we have Cigna in the room is we will bring them up to par with all these issues. Um, believe you me that every time I got on the phone with Cigna regarding any of the concerns you had, I was advocating and letting them know that this is unacceptable. I don't know who else is dealing with something like this, but it's not okay. Um, but our employees are very aware and we all, we always let them know during open enrollment as well that if they have any issues whatsoever at any point, that they can contact us. But in terms of a systemic solution, what we can do is bring all of these concerns forward to Cigna and say, hey, what can you all do to help us with all these issues that we're having?
Right, and so these issues that you guys are having is well documented, right? Yes, okay. Uh, Commissioner Campbell.
Um, as far as this discussion is concerned, um, let me utilize the moment to even ignore you guys and um speak to the public. You know, there was a time when I used to go um chasing uh telephone companies. And they have exhausted me to a point where I just say, because each time you have a problem with one company, the other company entices you with something wonderful. You change to them and it goes in circles. I have the opportunity on a daily basis of dealing with patients and um insurance company. And unless you, your primary or your group of healthcare providers change and that forces you to, to change your insurance, they're all the same. What happens is that I start a insurance company and I gives it, give it a very wonderful name. And um, you know those guy, guys at storefront that entice you to come in the store and tell you that they'll give you fifty percent for something, but when you go in there, a hundred percent for everything else. Um, so none of these insurance companies are perfect. And you keep jumping from one insurance to the other because you have a issue. You would be surprised that the one that entices you to come over, they may be better in respect to that particular problem. But hell, when you get to something else, you will understand that they are twice as worst. So um, I, I'm not selling any of them. People will say to me, um, Campbell, which one of these companies you say? I said, pick your choice. The, there is none that is perfect. And um, I would be more concerned that we negotiate in terms of the annual increase. But the, if I am diabetic versus you have two fingers, i- i- is a, spin a, a coin. You may get very good results and I may not. And I move elsewhere and it switches. So I, I, I suggest to folks on, don't make your life a hell by jumping from one insurance to another. They will sell you anything, but then when you're in it, you realize that it's not, it's the United States. The healthcare system is brutal. Okay, so I'm just saying that as my piece. I would be more concerned that you negotiate with them and don't let them push up the, 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 the costs too much. But if you jump to blue shield or black shield, you'd be surprised that somewhere down the line, you're going to be caught up in, in a mess.
What I can do too is through the city managers, give an update when we do sit with Cigna on periodically on what the changes are going to, that are happening. And, you know, just to see if any issues are getting resolved, if there are mass issues. For example, the prescription issues or um any sort of uh, you know, singular issues, it doesn't matter. Any one issue that we have is important enough for us to, you know, make sure that we bring them to the table to Cigna. So through the city manager's office, we can just follow up on um, you know, the progress of those issues.
When is your next meeting with Cigna?
So we have, we're hoping to have open enrollment by the end of this week, uh, I'm sorry, end of this month, beginning of next month. Um, and we typically sit down with them right prior to, to uh make sure that we know. But we have other meetings set with them um before the end of December, a few of them, so that we could speak about some of these changes that we want to make so that we can try to figure out how we can get those prescriptions in, how we can, you know, uh, work through some of those major issues that we're having.
Okay, uh, is it possible if they can actually uh come to a workshop?
Absolutely.
Okay, let's schedule that, city manager, because I think that there are many concerns. I've heard of concerns as well as it relates to prescription. Someone in your leadership team had that challenge.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I had had my issue as well with the dentist and Commissioner Dunn, which very sorry to hear about your experiences, Commissioner. So definitely it is important enough for us to have a real in-depth conversation. Okay, all right, thank you kindly. And so at this time, um, anything else from my colleagues? Okay, may I have a motion?
So move.
So be, before, before we do this, um, Cece? Come back and just tell the audience specifically what it is that we're voting for.
We are voting on the City of Lauderhill employees' group insurance for uh currently our provider is Cigna. So we're just voting to renew um and obviously on the increase that it, that there is with the renewal.
Okay, and, but we have the opportunity to, of course, have discussions and, and go back out for bid.
Absolutely, we do. Um, and like I said, I, I don't know that after one year, I would professionally recommend that. Just simply because I don't want to develop a reputation of being one of those people that kind of hops around. I'd like to establish some sort of a claims experience so that the next provider that we have, if there is a next provider, that they have plenty of experience to say, okay, this is how we're going to, this is the rate we're going to give you based on that experience, right? Cigna had thirty years to look at. Um, and for us, we pride ourselves, our city does, in having long-term standing relationships with our vendors. So of course, if there's something better for our employees, that's what we're going to do. But I would say we give this at least one more year to see what changes we can make so that we can, you know, see what, what we can do here.
Okay, so a year. No, 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 Commissioner Campbell, we're, we're finished. We're finished because we, we are calling for a motion. Is that okay? Yes, all right, so a motion, may I have a motion?
So move.
A second?
Five-year contract or the one-year renewal?
No, it's a five-year, but we can, we have the opportunity, as mentioned, to be able to go out within, okay? So we have a motion and we have a second. I would like to open it up to the public. Okay, close to the public. City clerk, please call the vote.
Mayor, who did the second?
The second was-
Commissioner John T.
Yep. Commissioner Campbell? Commissioner Dunn?
No.
Commissioner Hodgson? Vice Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes, this has been passed four one. Thank you. Wonderful. Okay, so now we are at item fourteen A.
Item fourteen A, Resolution Number twenty-five R dash zero eight, one fifty-seven. A resolution of City Commissioner City of Lauderhill renaming Northwest Forty, Forty-second Way as Charles Booth Way in honor of the memory of Charles E. Booth for his contribution service to the Lauderhill community. Authorizing City Manager, City Attorney to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution and pardon for effective date. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner John T.
Thank you so much and it's such a privilege and honor to address this resolution. And it's such a privilege and honor to address this resolution. Whereas in 2003, the City Commission enacted the Resolution Number 03R-0350 to outline the requirements for renaming city streets. And whereas Charles E. Booth was a businessman, philanthropist, Charlie Z. was popularly known, owned and operated Charlie's Bakery and the Lauderdale Mall since 1986. He died on February 6th, 2008. And whereas Charlie's Bakery, which still operates today, has employed approximately 190 individuals, most of whom are residents of Lauderdale. The business has participated in many community events such as the former Kitski and World Park and most recently has recently donated food items to the Central Park Library for its Caribbean Heritage Festival. Mr. Booth also made regular contributions to Lauderdale. Stem K-12 Paul Turner Elementary and Castle Hill Elementary's for school events and Teacher Appreciation Week. And whereas Charles E. Booth, who has been a stalwart in the Lauderdale community, is remembered as a man who left his mark in the history of the city of Lauderdale. And whereas the city of Lauderdale now wishes to permanently commemorate the memory of Charles E. Booth in a manner where he will be remembered not only by those currently residing in Lauderdale, but future residents as well. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Commission of the City of Lauderdale, Florida, that Section 1 in honor of the memory of Charles E. Booth and for his contributions and services to Lauderdale community, Northwest 42nd Way is hereby renamed as Charles Booth Way. And I so moved the motion.
Okay. I would, you second? Okay. Actually, I would like to just get a little bit more information. I know it's Charlie's Pastry?
Yes, Charlie's Pastry.
And if you can just tell us specifically where Charlie's Pastry is and just your experience with that sort of business?
Ever since I've been in broadcasting since 1904, Charlie's Pastry is, I remember from 1986. And it was one of the main sponsors of most of the programs on WAVI's radio that caused that station to survive on today. Probably the longest-serving Caribbean station in South Florida. And I'm so privileged to still be there as a broadcaster as of Charlie's Pastry's contribution to that radio station and many other broadcasts. What I'm saying here, they will tell the same thing, then confirm the things that I've said. And people who have lived in the area and continue to live in the area will attest to the things I've said about the wonderful Charlie. Charlie who passed away 1986. His son is here and I think other family members are here and people who knew him from that time.
Wonderful, thank you so much, Commissioner. And we have a motion, we do have a second by our Vice Mayor. I will now open it up to the public.
Evening, Mayor.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you for this time tonight. I'm Charles Booth Jr., Charlie Jr. I want to thank Commissioner John T. for bringing this resolution for tonight. I want to thank everyone that came out tonight in support. Like you said, Charlie's Pastry has been in Lauderdale since 1986. I think at this point that it's a landmark in the city. And there's a generation, I think, that everyone knows Charlie's Pastry has been in and has been a part of it as they've grown up and now we have children and so forth that come in. My father was someone who believed in giving to the community because he always felt like pouring into the community, the community is going to love you back. He was the 2001 Sun Sentinel Excalibur Award winner for his philanthropy. He always wanted to give. We still do it to this day, my mom, my aunt. We provide for teachers on Teacher Appreciation Week for the schools in our community. We just recently gave items to the Central Park Library for their Heritage Festival. And it's just something that we've always done. People know that they can feel comfortable coming to us when they have something going on because they know that we're a family and a business that's going to provide for our community because our community loves us. I just feel like, you know, all the accolades and the people that know my dad, that one of the best ways to honor him is to etch his name in the city that he's been in so long, you know?
Wonderful.
I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Yes. Anyone else? Any other comments? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Madam Mayor, all elected officials, city attorneys, city manager. I've been a resident of Lauderdale for 39 years. I knew when those doors are open. And I'm here tonight to just express a few words. We're here tonight to honor a man whose impact in our community is immeasurable. For over two decades, I had the honor of knowing Mr. Charles Booth, not just as a business owner, I would say three decades, but as a man of faith. I witnessed his baptism and his spiritual journey and I was blessed to serve with him in ministry. I also had the privilege of spending a lot of quality time with Charles and his family. And what I saw was a man dedicated to more than just business. Charlie's Pastry is a cornerstone of this community for 39 years. It's a place where countless people found their first jobs and where organizations and individuals alike benefited from the generosity of the Booth family. Charles had a passion for giving back and his commitment to various ministries and the community was unwavering. The generosity he showed lives on and as a new generation carries this legacy. It is a reminder to whom much is given, much is required. You mentioned the various activities. I won't run them down. Summer jobs for high school teens, scholarships offered to employees, children for those who graduated from high school. And he always gave high school graduates scholarships at his home church, First Church of the Open Bible. And he also donated to various athletic teams in our Lauderdale community. And while we honor Charles tonight, we must also honor the partnership that made it all possible. The success of this business was not a solo effort. Tonight, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge Mrs. Patrick Booth, also known as Ms. Pat, my dear friend and his life partner. Just as Barack in the Bible would not go into battle without Deborah, Charlie and Pat built this enterprise together. After his passing, Pat and another remarkable woman, Charlie's sister, Mrs. Olive Hall. She's been there for many years. They have continued to guide this business, keeping it running like a well-oil machine. So on this momentous occasion, I want to say a posthumous congratulations to Mr. Charles Booth and to the Booth family present tonight to witness this special occasion. Congratulations on this well-deserved honor. Thank you.
Well said. Well said. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, esteemed Mayor and Commissioners, honored guests and fellow residents of Lauderdale. I'm Dr. Francine Boss Stewart. I stand before you today both humbled and proud as a former resident of this vibrant city and as someone whose story, like that of Charles Booth, began on the chores of Jamaica. My family came to this country in search of opportunity, carrying the hopes of my family and the spirit of our island. Lauderdale became our haven, a place where my dreams found fertile ground. I attended the schools here in Lauderdale, Lauderdale Paul Turner, Lauderdale Middle School and Boyd Anderson High School. From my earliest memories as a child, I will never forget my time at Charlie's Pastry's on 12th Street. Not only did it fill our neighborhood with the sweet aroma of the best patty and cocoa bread in this country, but it serves as a gathering spot for our family and friends. Over the years, from childhood to adulthood, I found myself returning time and time again, not just for the pastries, but the sense of fameliness, family and togetherness that the Booth family creates. This shop is more than a business, it's a cornerstone of connection to our community. Today, I serve as the Director of Broward County Schools and I can let you know that Charlie's Pastry is a partner in a lot of schools in the Broward County School District. Particularly, they have supported schools such as Castle Hill Elementary, Royal Palm Elementary, Lauderdale 612, Larkdale Elementary. In his role, Mr. Booth's legacy stands as a shining example. He was a pioneer in every sense of the world where he did not simply build a successful business. He invested in people, in their dreams and the future of Lauderdale. As a philanthropist, he gave generously, ensuring that the blessings he received were shared. His commitment extended far beyond his storefront. I'm also the daughter of Pastor Alan Ball, who could not be here tonight, of First Church of the Open Bible, a congregation deeply rooted in this Lauderdale community. Charles Booth was not only a cherished member, but a dedicated deacon and board member. I witnessed his unwavering service, his steady hands guiding our church, his kind heart uplifting our members and his generosity shining through his annual scholarships for graduating high school seniors. Each year, thanks to Mr. Booth, young people were given the gift of hope and possibility as they stepped in their next chapter. Additionally, Charlie's Pastry continues to be a beacon in our community, as stated before. This isn't, renaming the portion of 12th Street is not just a recognition, but it's a tribute to a man who shaped our city's identity, whose legacy will continue to inspire generations. Let his name stand as a daily reminder of what it means to lead with compassion, to build with purpose and to give with an open heart. Thank you.
Wonderful. Sir, you'll be speaking as well? Okay. Any other persons, please raise your hand? Okay, so we will close it out with you. Sure.
Okay, my name is, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Paul Ball, is one of the pastors here at First Church of the Open Bible here in Lauderdale Lakes. My father, Alan Ball, cannot be here, he's a senior pastor of our church. Our church started in 1984 in Lauderdale off 16th Street. That's on the warehouse behind UPS. A few years later, we moved to a building across from Lauderdale Middle School, where the football field is, and we resided there for a few years. And in 2003, we were built to our current location, which is off the intersection of 24th Court and 49th Avenue, which is the border of Lauderdale and Lauderdale Lakes. Charles Booth accepted the Lord as his personal Savior back in the early 90s. He quickly became an active member of our church. As was stated before, as a board member and a deacon, it was extremely instrumental behind the scenes as we went through a building process of our current site. Through his company, Charlie's Pastry's, scholarships have been provided to our graduating seniors for years. And that tradition still continues today. He was also very involved in our community outreach programs at the church, not only with his resources, but his time. My family matriculated here from Jamaica in 1979. I've seen a lot of changes in the city of Lauderdale. My parents bought their home in Lauderdale off 11 Place. After graduating from college, spent four years, I moved back to Lauderdale. I've been residing in Lauderdale since 1994 as a homeowner. So I've been in Lauderdale since 1979. So I've seen a lot of changes in this city. I remember when this city hall was off 47th. It's been a while. When I came in this country, I never had a beef patty until Charlie's Pastry's opened up off 12th Street. I visited their shop quite a bit. It was the only patty shop in that area. During this time, many Jamaicans were swiftly moving into Lauderdale. You could visibly see the change. Taking jobs wherever they could. Many Jamaicans traveled by bus. By doing so, Charlie's Pastry's became a source of food for many for their lunch and dinner. During the late 1990s and early 2000s, Charlie's Pastry quickly added two more stores and a distribution center in Lauderdale behind the UPS. This has an economic impact on the residents of Lauderdale community. A few years before Charlie's Pastry's opened, the Broad Mall was established and several businesses were leaving the Lauderdale area. As a pioneer and a pillar of the community, many other Caribbean business leaders witnessed his success and began starting their business in replace of those businesses that was leaving. When Mr. Charles Booth passed away, we believe that God looked down on him and said, "Well done, good and faithful servant." As a representative of the First Church of the Open Bible, we fully endorse this name change. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you very much and thank you to all that came up to speak on behalf of this resolution. So we have a motion, we have a second, we've opened up to the public. We're, we've closed it now to the public and we're going to ask for the votes. City Clerk?
Commissioner Campbell? Commissioner Dunn? Yes. Commissioner Hodgson? Vice Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Absolutely. And so this has been passed five-zero. Congratulations. 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 And so, City Manager, if you can just advise us, this has been passed and typically, how long does it take for the ceremony to happen? That's what you're looking for, right? Yes.
Again, we, I'll defer to the Public Works Director, but there is a process for us to go through to have the actual street sign. I guess you'll say, create it. Once we have that street sign ready, we will be in contact with the family of Mr. Booth so that we can schedule the actual street naming ceremony. Chief, I don't know just specifically just what a range of time would be for us to have the sign. Less than 30, so about 30 days. So about a month out, we'll be in contact with the public.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I intend to have an outside broadcast live on radio station that day, that very special day.
And Mayor, if I, just to add again, and I went to school with Charles Booth Jr. and I can tell you, back in 86, when we were in high school, we used to rush during our lunch hour to try to make it over to Charlie's Patties to get a patty cocoa bread and a soda for $1.50. Trust me, it outdid the school lunch every day. So again, we do appreciate your family for what they did for our community.
Thank you very much again. Thank you. Wonderful. We are now going to go to item 14B and 14C. I would love to do 14C first and then we can then talk a little bit as it relates to 14. So 14C, City Attorney?
Yes. Resolution Number 25R-08161. A resolution of City Commissioner of City of Lauderdale awarding the key to the city of Lauderdale to Edie Campbell for her dedication and commitment to Lauderdale community. Authorizing City Managers, City Attorney.
If we can have some order.
To all things necessary to fracture this resolution, praying for effective date. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you kindly. And of course, this resolution was requested by myself, but I am sure after tonight, my colleagues would agree with me that it is important, as mentioned before, to give those who have worked and labored in our community their flowers, as well as the recognition that is warranted. And so we have here that whereas Ms. Edie Campbell has dedicated her career to serving the most vulnerable members of our community with compassion, professionalism and steadfast integrity, specifically to the residents of the city of Lauderdale. And whereas through her leadership and operational expertise, Ms. Campbell established and managed seven residential facilities across Broward County, collaborating with the public and private partners to support reentry and renewal initiatives. And whereas Ms. Campbell proactively engaged in reentry efforts prior to the widespread adoption of formal programs, providing residents with opportunities for stability, personal development and to be able to integrate in the community. And whereas Ms. Campbell consistently served the homeless population by coordinating and delivering essential needs and meals and various services on a regular basis for more than 20 years. And, yes. And with capacity constraints that arose, she identified and implemented alternative solutions to meet the demand and the need. Whereas even after her retirement, Ms. Campbell's commitment to service continued, including making sure that the residence of 3764 Northwest 2nd Street was beneficial. was beneficial to rebuilding her life and others. A gesture recognized by the dedication of the property to Ms. Campbell's honor by, of course, Michelle Martin. As a lasting testament to her generosity, of course, Ms. Campbell's generosity and her dedication to the renewal and opportunity. When she saw a need, she fulfilled that need. And whereas the City Commission has determined that Ms. Campbell sustains leadership and impact to public welfare merit, formal recognition by the city of Lauderdale. And so, therefore, be it resolved by the City Commission of the city of Lauderdale that number one, that the City Commission of the city of Lauderdale hereby award a key to the city of Lauderdale to Ms. Edie Campbell in recognition in recognition and acknowledgement for her sustained leadership, her transformational service, and enduring commitment to creating opportunities and hope for those that were most in need. And to number two, that the City Commission of the city of Lauderdale presents a copy of this resolution to be framed as a symbol of the city's appreciation for her remarkable contribution to Lauderdale. So, Ms. Campbell, we appreciate you and we honor you. And we thank you for the years that you have been on this earth, that you have identified your purpose, you know your assignment, and you have fulfilled them. So we thank you so much for all that you have done. A few months back, a few of my colleagues did go to that ceremony where the home was rededicated to you symbolically because you had put so much into it and allowed individuals who found that their lives were kind of on the edge and sometimes hope was not there and they were in despair. But yet still, you made sure that you provided what they needed in order for them to survive. And we thank you for that. And then you presented the house to Ms. Michelle Martin just in a gesture of saying that you cared for her and whatever she might have been going through at that time, you wanted her to know that she was thought of and that she was loved. So we thank you so much for that, and thank you for all that you have done and continue to do. It is my honor to ask my colleagues to join me in presenting this key to you in a vote. And so, at this particular time, I will ask for a motion.
So move.
I got three motions.
Second.
And a second? Okay. And now we will open it up to the public for those who would like to say a few words as it relates to Ms. Campbell.
Ms. Campbell, good evening, dear. I, I thought I had done some work, but you have truly done some work. Um, I've learned so much since I heard that you were going to be honored of the work you did, and I thank you for looking out for the people. That's what true leaders are. True leaders make sure every step they make, they are serving the people. They're not thinking about self-interest, and you did that so many times from where I, what I've heard. Thank you so much and continue to do what you do. Buzz, you can boss on that, okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Uh, I'll brief, and, um, I think that, um, this honor is very appropriate at this point in time. If you think about the climate in our country, and there's such an atmosphere of I, me, and mine, but when you have an individual who's been selfless, who really amplifies what we should be about, we should remember the least of thee. And she does it just effortless, just timeless, and it really speaks to the character of the individual. And so, a- again, I thank you all for doing this, and I just charge us all. If we ever get caught up in the rhetoric of the world and what's on TV, just think about this amazing individual and the light that she shines.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. Um, didn't come prepared with the speech. I came prepared with my heart. Ms. Edie Campbell is definitely a one of a kind. Just by knowing her in the short period of time that I've had the opportunity to know her and hearing her history, she built a home in Africa, and she left it for the individuals that were there who she was doing a missionary for. Just last week, Thursday, she needed to borrow my truck to deliver food in the city of Lauderdale to the nursing home. It had to be about ninety-five, ninety-six degrees. And I say, "You can drive my truck?" She says, "Yes, I'm on the way." "I have something to do, but I'll make sure that I leave the key for you." In the time where I needed someone, by not even knowing her as an individual, it was nobody but God. It was nobody but God that allowed me to walk into Nineteenth Street and meet her without even knowing that it was going to turn out that I'm sitting here now standing in front of my commissioners, my mayor, and others to honor her as well as she deserved this plus. We have a few of her individuals who lived in the home who's here tonight. These young men lived in the home that I took over for over twenty years. And the impact that I see that she has put into others, along with myself, not knowing what the outcome would be, but it allowed me to find myself, to find my talents, because the house needed work, and now I can actually say that because of Agape Love that she provided to me in that home, has allowed me now to be able to help others with the skills that I learned by renovating this home due to Ms. Edie Campbell. And only thing she would say, a little bit at a time, and I understand what a little bit at a time is, and that's why I'm standing here tonight, because I was determined to show her back some type of appreciation. And it's not always about a dead president. It's about the work that she's done and what need to be honored while she's alive to smell her roses. I thank you all for your time. I can't, I can go on and on and on, but Edie Campbell, if I ever not tell you again, along with her family, I thank you. You are definitely a one of a kind, and it was no, it was no mistake. It was all ordained by God, and that I do appreciate. It wasn't easy, but I made it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Martin, I thought you were going to sing would Never Would Have Made It. Wonderful.
Very good. Eddie's family and friends, bless your love. Would you please sing it? This is love. Mayor, I see. I've known her for.
Your whole life.
Seventy-five years. We've been together. Why she like she is, I'm going to tell you. Our great-great-grandmother, a slave, came out of that, became a nurse, a nurse. So if we wonder why Eddie became a nurse when she grew up, and the caring and the giving, and she's a thief also. A thief of heart. If you ever met her, she stole your heart. She did, and she's a thief of that. But Eddie, you have always been there for our family. Always. My song to her and Beth Miller does it better than anyone I know. You are the wind beneath our wings. So Eddie, you deserve this, a lady who gave up her home for a family, a lady and her three children because the system put her in a place where one of the girls were being molested. And she came to Eddie and she told him what had happened, and Eddie worked that time at night. And she said, "Take my house." Who would do that? "Take my house and you and your children stay here. I don't need it because I'm not here." And that's what she did. But that's the type person she is. If you know her, it's to love her. Eddie, I'm so proud of you. No one does it better. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Seventy-five years together, they are sisters. Yes, seventy-five years together. Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second, we have opened it up to the public. We are now closed to the public, and so we'll ask the City Clerk to please call the votes.
Commissioner Campbell? Commissioner Dunn? Commissioner Hobson? Vice Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes, absolutely, and this has been passed five zero. We would like to present you with the key to the city.
How do you want us to do it?
There are a lot of family members. Okay, look this way. One. File, everybody. One, two, three. Four more times. One, two, three.
Thank you. Okay, one more, one more.
I'm, I'm, excuse me, excuse me, I, I forgot one, one major thing. She's a graduate of Dillard High School.
Awesome. Wonderful, wonderful. We have another item, we have another item just to discuss. We thank you so much, Ms. Edie. Thank you again. So we have item fourteen B, and we are looking to discuss this item just a little bit more. The intent is this, the intent is this. We would like to name the streets where her home, Agape Love, is located after Ms. Edie Campbell. It is something, it is something that we have discussed for many months, and we place it on the agenda simply to have discussion because we understand that the bylaws as it relates to, I make sure I have my documents before me. The bylaws as it relates to Broward Estates, where it is located, does indicate that the naming of buildings or other specific areas of the community shall be done by ballot. And however, the naming of streets shall be prohibited within Broward Estates and George Community boundaries. This is in the bylaws that, um, has, was basically, uh, put together years and years and years ago. And so, we want to have just a five-minute or less, Vice Mayor, conversation around this to see if perhaps, uh, the bylaws then can be changed to allow this. So this is something that I am asking of the public because we, we discussed this, Michelle Martin and I, and she has done her diligence in talking with the community. And I will tell you that the majority of the persons say, "Why haven't we done this already?" But we have to follow rules and regulations, and we have to make sure that we adhere to the law. So I know that the presidents are esteemed presidents, of course. Uh, Mr. Wilkinson is here. I just want to have some dialogue as it relates to it. We have to open the floor to you first, sir, because the commission does not have any authority at this time other than hearing from you and your members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I hate to be a party pooper, but Ms. Campbell, we want to thank you for all that you did and continue to do. And if it was up to me, it wouldn't be a problem to, uh, name a street after you. But on the other hand, we have bylaw that was put in place before me, and I'm going to have to adhere to those. Uh, unless we bring it to our community, and like you say, we have to vote on it, and we'll come to the, uh, conclusion there.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. City, uh, man, City Attorney, can you give us a little bit of light as it relates to the procedure or how they can go about this?
Your, do the city supersede our bylaw?
Well, obviously, the bylaws would control, uh, I would have to.
Uh I would have to research it, but on, on, based on the fact that these bylaws govern those streets and govern the neighborhood. I would, I would uh lean on those bylaws unless I find an exception. But let me research it and I get back to you.
Can they be changed?
Oh, definitely.
Of course. As you mentioned, Mr. Wilkinson, rightfully so. You will take it back to your board, have some discussions around it. And then we can, we can proceed and have more conversation. All right, we appreciate that. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wilkinson.
I have our parliamentarian, he wanna uh say a few words.
Okay. And then we will cut it off here. And if we have one or two comments from the side, and then we will just close this out. I think this is a fruitful conversation, by the way. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, uh. For the people of Saint, Broward Estates, Saint George, by the way. Civic Association, I am the parliamentarian. The bylaws have been in place uh for a long time. But as with uh, in our stipulation of our bylaws, the bylaws can be updated or changed at any time. But it must come from the community itself. The citizens of Saint George, Broward Estates, Saint George must vote to change or update the bylaws.
Okay. Thank you so much, great information. All right, um. On this end? Nope? Nope, okay, wonderful. Commissioner Campbell? Talking to the mind?
Yeah. The document that you just um looked at, it states the what the bylaw is saying. But is there anywhere else in the bylaw um indicate in case there has to be a amendment? Um i- it just, i- 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 can it take petitions to make not necessarily permanent changes, but exceptions? For, for example, I'll just give you an example, um. Communities that I've lived in before with um bylaws relating to a specific community um requires fifty-one percent of the residents in the community to make changes. Isn't that possible here?
No, no, Commissioner Campbell, I think we're gonna have to take it to the community.
No, 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 that's what I meant. I'm talking about the community. If, is it possible if you have a petition within the community? And say fifty-one or sixty-one percent of the folks, folks there are in agreement, is that a possibility?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, wonderful.
I don't think it'd be a problem.
Right.
We wanna take it to the community for.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay, okay. So there's a pathway?
Yes, absolutely. There is definitely a possibility and hope. And thank you for presenting this as well. Cause section six, the bylaw says bylaws can be updated at any time as outlined in the Brower, the Robert Rules of Order. Yes. So I'm glad that we've had this discussion. Thank you so much for your cooperation. And thank you so much, Ms. Eddie Campbell. And I am optimistic, I'm not a prophet. But I am declaring that this will work out. And I hope to be walking on the street with your name on it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor, can we, can we table item?
So we are going to just table this item.
Yeah, fourteen B.
So we can have some more conversations around it. And thank you so much, Mr. Wilkinson. And thank you so much, sir, for that. We appreciate it. Okay, wonderful. So we are going to ask a vote for, to table it. I have a motion. A second? Okay. Wonderful, I have a motion in a second. We've already opened it up to the public. So city clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodgson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes, this has been passed five zero to table to have further discussions. Thank you so much, all for attending. We appreciate it.
Mayor, uh can we have a vote on the consent items?
Yes, we will. So we are going to have the vote on the consent items. I think I lost my document, sir.
Just a motion to approve the consent.
The height of the excitement.
Second, second, okay. Call the vote, Mayor.
I will call the vote. For the consent item. And who made the second?
Call the vote.
The second? Motion by Campbell, second by Vice Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodgson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes, and that has been passed five zero. Okay, wonderful. And so now we are good on time. It is just what? Eight twenty-six. This is a record. So we only have a few more items left. So these are not on the consent agenda, so we do have to discuss it. We're gonna go quite quickly. Number, number fifteen, city attorney.
Item fifteen, a resolution of the city commission of City Lauderdale. We move into Calvin Haynes as a member of local affordable housing advisory committee and pointing blank to the local affordable housing advisory committee by the city commission as a whole for the remainder of a four-year term, expiring June twenty-eighth, providing for effective date. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Perfect, thank you kindly. And of course, we are all aware of Mr. Brent Lewis and his service that he has provided for the city of Lauderdale. And so I don't believe we'll have any opposing factors, but.
Not opposing, but can there be a question?
Pardon?
Can there be a question?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Um. Are you sitting on, you're sitting on a board under my? What are you sitting on again?
So good evening, everyone. Um Brent Lewis here, six day twenty Northwest Forty-Fifth Court. I'm sitting on the planning and zoning board.
Okay. So, so uh city attorney.
And he be on two boards, is that the question?
Yeah.
I think the city clerk can answer that.
Yeah, yes, he's, I've been to a meeting, yes, he's on the board.
No, 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 I'm not asking.
Wanna know if he can serve on two boards at the same time?
I believe that's the condition precedent to serve on this board.
The local housing, or I think it's local affordable housing committee requires that a member from the planning and zoning board serve on their board.
Okay.
So Calvin Haynes was that person, so he's no longer on planning. So he will take his position on that board.
Okay.
Okay, wonderful. Any comment, sir?
Uh no, just happy to help through my uh work with the Central Lauderdale Neighbor Association. I believe it was last month. Um I was approached by city staff. I mentioned to everyone that, hey, I'm part of the planning and zoning board. And uh city staff said, hey, uh would you like to help out on the local affordable housing uh committee? I said, sure, look into it. And so that's why I applied and why I'm here today.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you kindly. And so I would like to have a motion.
So moved.
A second? A motion in a second? Open to the public, closed to the public? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodgson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes, and that has been passed five zero. Congratulations, Mr. Lewis. Uh number sixteen, city attorney?
Item sixteen, an ordinance of the city commission of City Lauderdale amend the city code of ordinance by amendment chapter six, Buildings and Building Regulation, Article One, and Journal Section six dash ten, enumeration of permit fees, regulation inspection fees, and increased fees for minimum housing inspections, and with housing inspection, providing for conflicts, providing for effective date. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you kindly. And this has been proposed by our city manager. City manager, if you can just give us a synopsis as it relates to this.
Yes. On an annual basis, uh owners of rental property are required to have an inspection completed by city staff. That inspection ensures that the property is in compliance with what we call Schedule M of the city's code. Is to ensure that uh the, the systems within the property are up to code. Uh they verify items such as the AC, the plumbing, the electrical, uh windows, uh and all of the basic requirements for a property to be habitable. So the, the inspection is carried out on an annual basis currently by the Community Standards Division within the Finance Department. The proposed increase on average uh will increase the fee of about twenty-five dollars on average for the rental property owners within our community. And that cost will be utilized to cover the uh additional cost for us providing those services within the community.
Okay. So the, the cost will then?
The additional revenue, correct, will offset the cost for us providing those additional services.
All right. Uh Melissa, Commissioner Dunn?
Hey Kenny, were you able to pull those numbers that I asked for in our meeting today? I, I'd like to know what other fees a rental property owner would be paying, please?
Yes, staff will provide the requested information.
Thank you. Check out that walk.
Good evening, all. So on a basic minimum housing, a basic COU for rental property, uh property owner would pay two hundred and five dollars for a single unit.
Okay.
They would pay eighteen dollars and seventy-seven cents for their actual COU, which is owner of rental property. And they pay an additional twenty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents for development, business development fees. So grand total is two fifty-three seventeen. That scales up based on the number of units that the person owns up to ten. They are paying that two hundred and five times ten. And then from there, the rate begins to pour rate down again, eleven through ninety-nine, instead of paying two oh five, pay one forty. And a hundred or more units, you pay one oh six for your minimum housing inspection fees instead.
Okay. And does this compare well with other cities? Are we in alignment or are we a little bit more?
We are in alignment. Um there are other cities that do other things in lieu of charging this fee on an annual basis. But we, for the most part, we keep ourselves in line with other cities.
You do have something to add, Sean? Okay, all right. Well, so I, I was concerned about this, as I mentioned in the meeting, because I wanna make sure that, you know, we've raised the fire assessment fee. We have a lot of fees that we're raising, right? And I wanna make sure that we're not um particularly, given the fact that we're on our way to a recession, that we're making things a little bit more challenging for residents. Um that being said, we are a, is it fifty-seven percent rental city? So. It's citywide, I think it's actually sixty. Sixty percent rental? Yeah. So, all right.
Any other conversation around this? Okay, so may I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. And open to the public? All right, so we are now closed to the public. Um it's city clerk, if you can call the vote.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
No.
Commissioner Hodgson? Vice Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes, and this has been passed four one. Wonderful. All right, so now we are at number seventeen.
Item seventeen, an ordinance of the city commission of City Lauderdale, amend City Lauderdale Code of Orders, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Two, Officers, Employees, Division Three, Retirement, Part Three, Police Pension Plan Trust Fund by amendment section two dash seventy-five, definition related definition of tier two, providing for effective date. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, wonderful. May I have a motion?
So moved.
A second? Have a motion in a second, open to the public, closed to the public. City clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Campbell? Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodgson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes, and this has been passed five zero, number eighteen.
Item eighteen, ordinance of City of Lauderdale, amend the City of Lauderdale Code of Orders, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Two, Officers, Employees, Division Three, Retirement, Part Four, City Manager Pension Plan Trust Fund, Section two dash eighty-eight point seven, vesting termination purchase of prior covered service, amend in subsections F, to revise the purchase of prior service provision, providing for effective date. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Wonderful. Um we can have a motion, please? A second?
Second.
Open to the public, closed to the public. City clerk?
Commissioner Campbell? Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodgson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes, and this has been passed five zero, number nineteen.
Item nineteen, an ordinance of the City of Lauderdale, amend the City of Lauderdale Code of Orders, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Two, Officers, Employees, Division Three, Retirement, Part Four, City Management Pension Plan Trust Fund in Section two dash eighty-eight point fifteen, deferral retirement option plan by increasing the ma- maximum participation in deferred retirement option plan from five years to seven years with condition, providing for effective date. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, wonderful. Um can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second? Motion and a second, now open to the public? Now closed to the public. City clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Campbell? Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodgson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes, and this has been passed five zero, number twenty.
Item number twenty, ordinance of City of Lauderdale, amend the city code, ordinance, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Two, Officers, Employees, Division Three, Retirement, Part One, firefighter's pension plan, Section two dash fifty-four, deferred retirement option plan by amendment subsection two dash fifty-four point two, eligibility and amended draft plan included one and one-half percent contribution and causes a collective bargaining between the City of Lauderdale and local thirty-eighty Metro Barra Professional Firefighters uh Union, providing for effective date. Thank you.
Thank you kindly. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And now we will open it up to the public? Closed to the public. City clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Campbell? Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodgson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes, this has been passed five zero. And that concludes all of the agenda items at eight thirty-seven. Wonderful. So now we are going to have communications from the elected officials and from our leadership, and then we will close out. I will start this time with our city manager.
Nothing at the moment, thank you.
That's why I started with you. Uh Commissioner Campbell? Zero. Vice Mayor?
Nothing.
Nothing. Commissioner Dunn?
Yes, um if you are a Lauderdale business and you are looking to scale your business, or if you're a Lauderdale resident and you're looking to start a business, Lauderdale Shines is currently accepting applications. The application will close. Um there's an information session happening on September third, and the application, I believe, will close around September seventh. Um now is the opportunity for you to get the support that you need in order for you to grow or start a business in the city of Lauderdale. Go to the city's website for more information. Applications are open now. We've graduated already over a hundred and fifty businesses and provide them the support in order for them to move forward. And most of those businesses are also Lauderdale residents. So apply.
Wonderful, thank you so much, Commissioner. Commissioner John T.
Good to be back taking care of the people's business and thankful to those who supported their various resolutions this evening.
Wonderful. And our esteemed city attorney?
I yield my time to the city manager.
I thought we can't do that. That was good. All right, and so for me, thank you kindly, everyone, for bearing with us. It was a, a good time off, but it was not time off because you saw all of us in the community working. And just to say that, we appreciate all of you. Thank you so much for this. You had your time already. It was, it's Commissioner Campbell's birthday, by the way. It was. And so he does, he cannot get, he cannot get gifts per se. But you can, you can, you can bake him a rum cake, a black cake, or any type of cake, right? Commissioner Campbell, yes. Well, thank you, guys, and have a very, very, very good night. See you again, bye-bye.